Okay, all right folks, we're on the air and welcome this evening. I'll call the meeting to order and would all of you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul, Mary.
Coulson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Callum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coeburn.
Here.
Knopka.
Here, and Collins is excused. Okay, all right. This evening, we have on the agenda quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning file CU-0114. This is a continuation of a quasi judicial de novo public hearing regarding an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny the conditional use application. The location of the property is immediately south of 1122 53rd Avenue Southwest. The applicant is Verizon Wireless LLC. Okay, I call to order this quasi judicial public hearing at 7:15 PM. And do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? Bill?
I received an email from a constituent expressing their viewpoints on the issue, and I just returned the email and said, "Thank you."
You're gonna need to report the content of the, what the constituents' view was about the area.
They were in favor of it. They said that the cell, the cell reception in the area is very poor and felt that this would help.
Okay, all right.
Received the same email.
Okay. All right, okay. And do any members wish to report a site visit? And do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? And does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any counselor in this hearing or decision? Okay. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the meeting recorder and the DH reporter. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Any continuance or extension of the record requested by the applicant shall result in a corresponding extension to the 120-day limit. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I call for the staff report. Planner Melissa Anderson.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. As you mentioned today, it's a continuation of a public hearing that we started on August 27th. So because this is a continuation, the public record is still open, so if people have testimony, either verbal or written, they may submit that this evening. Now, the applicant, since our last meeting, public hearings, the applicant submitted additional information to address some of the issues that were raised on the August 27th meeting. One of the changes that they proposed was to set back the proposed cell tower further away from the existing bowling alley building, and so it is set back 120 feet, the height of the tower, from the property line, which is adjacent to the existing bowling alley. I also wanted to mention that in addition to what is included in your packet from the applicant as additional information, we did receive the public testimony from a Jason Cadwell today, and that was given to you on the dais here this evening. Now, the applicable review criteria for this decision is the conditional use permit criteria, as well as design standards for cell towers, which was included in the council's packet. And the conditional use permit requires discretion, so it is up to the city council to determine whether the review criteria have been met or not. Council tonight is requested to make a tentative decision and then direct staff to return at the next council meeting on October 22nd with final findings for the council's final decision. That's all I have.
Okay, all right. Any councilors have any questions? Okay. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then present it to the city clerk. Okay, would the applicant please like to come forward and then state your name and address and make any comments you may have for the council?
See the signer says, "Please do not adjust the mic," which was the first thing I did, so I apologize.
That'll be $500,000.
Yeah, I'm off to a great start.
You're outta here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Mike Connors, here on behalf of the applicant, Verizon Wireless. My address is 520 Southwest Yam Hill Street, Suite 235, Portland, Oregon, 97204. As staff indicated, as you know, at the last hearing, we asked for a continuance to have some more time to address some additional issues that came up at the hearing. The two primary issues had to do with trying to see if we could accommodate the neighboring property owner who owns the bowling center, Mr. Nyquist's concern about its proximity to his building. And the second issue had to do with some questions that came up with our evaluation of some of the alternative sites, in particular, the industrial sites that are located in the area. So the material that you have is that, includes that, as well as some additional issues. I'm gonna just try to summarize it, and obviously, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me along the way. So the first issue has to do with trying to accommodate the adjacent property owner. It was somewhat of a challenge because we're dealing with engineering requirements, RF requirements, city code issues, flood plains, wetlands, a number of environmental overlays on the property. But we were able to relocate the tower to the west, and it's proposed now to be 120 feet from the property line. And since the bowling alley or bowling center is approximately eight to 10 feet off of the property line, it's about 130 feet. It meets all the other criteria. It's something that we're obviously in support of, and we provided that plan to Mr. Nyquist prior to the hearing. He just got back to me this morning. He did, you know, indicate that he had seen it and was gonna review it, got back to me this morning and said that it did address his safety concern, which is primary concern. He's not withdrawing his letter, which had some additional policy issues that he raised, but he did indicate that he appreciated our willingness to accommodate that issue. And also, the fact that he's not here tonight is some indication that we've largely addressed his particular issue. One thing I do wanna note is that we are asking that there be a condition that allows us to make some minor modifications in the specific location of the site, because it is close to some of the floodplain areas. But we're willing to agree as part of that condition, and that would only be to make sure that we comply with the floodplain criteria, because that's one of the conditions that was already in the original staff report. But we are willing to agree that, to the extent we make any minor modifications, we will ensure that we're no closer than 120 feet from that property line, so we won't get out of skew with what we are doing here to accommodate Mr. Nyquist's issue. Second thing that we addressed is to provide you some clarification, additional information on the alternative sites analysis or evaluation of some of the other sites, in particular, the industrial sites. And I tried to summarize it in my letter, but what we have is a letter from the site acquisition person, Jim Jaggers, who was the one that was responsible for doing the initial site assessment and identifying the site, as well as a letter from Verizon RF engineer that basically reevaluates, reconsider's these sites to determine whether they will work. And what it basically shows you at the background, because there were some questions about, well, why did you pick, why didn't, you know, why did you identify some of these industrial sites that are close to the ring or outside of the ring? What about this property? It's a little bit outside of the ring. How does that all work within the context of what we're saying we need to be in the ring? What Mr. Jaggers explained is that standard process, we get a search area ring that identifies, here's the area where this particular facility needs to go. And looking at that area, you can see that a lot of the properties are open space zone, residential, which has a 50-foot limitation to it, which is far below the height that we needed. So Mr. Jaggers went back to RF and said, "There are some real limitations here. We need to, can I look at broadening it?" And the RF direction was, "Look at properties outside the ring, but as close as possible to the ring." And based on him looking at viable sites that accommodate the site, property owners that might be willing, he identified basically the subject site, a light industrial site that is marked on our map, as well as a heavy industrial site. Took that back to RF, and RF said, "Those industrial sites are too far north of the search ring, so they're not gonna meet our coverage capacity needs. They're actually gonna create some potential conflict with other sites that are further north of this particular site." So that was the basis for the determination that this is the only viable site that can meet our needs. Nonetheless, we asked him, Mr. Dasen, to reevaluate not only those two particular sites, but we said, "Just take a look at the industrial area. You've got the heavy industrial, the light industrial. Evaluate that. Tell us if there are any sites, if there's any way to accommodate it." And he concluded that there are not, largely for the same reason that those two particular light and heavy industrial sites were determined. So that hopefully fills in some of the gaps, answers some of the questions that were raised at the prior hearing. And you can see that we really did make a pretty extensive effort to evaluate industrial sites, to determine if we could accommodate on them. Those were ruled out, and as I said before, a number of times the last hearing, believe me, if we'd been able to use one of those industrial sites, that would've been the fastest, easiest path for us, but it just doesn't provide the specific need that we are using for this site. So again, hopefully that fills in some of the blanks. I think it shows, we did make an extensive effort. There's really no evidence in the record to show to the contrary. No one's been able to say, "Here's a site that could work." And so I really do think that we've provided substantial evidence to show that we've satisfied this requirement to look at some of these alternative sites. One other site that you'll see that's in there that did not come up at this hearing, after the hearing, I received an email from the president of the Mennonite Village Retirement Community, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, and just said, "Hey, we've got a site that we want you to look at, because we've got some coverage needs, and if you're willing to side it there, we'd be willing to accommodate it." We had our engineer look at it. Unfortunately, it's about two miles from the subject site, so it's well outside the area. But nonetheless, we asked him to evaluate it, and our RF engineer determined that, you know, that's definitely too far to meet our needs. Also in the material, see, we did an updated site analysis, just to provide some of this information. So I think you have everything that you need on that, hopefully, and obviously, if you have any further questions, please let me know. Our material addressed a couple of other additional issues, and that's in the letter from Mr. Heil, who's, you know, here with me again tonight. And real quickly, it was just, there was a, you know, brief issue raised about, what about potential structural issues, geotechnical issues? Is there a concern there? And so we provided some of the information, which was already part of the application material, but just so that you could see it, to show you that we did do a geotechnical structural analysis and, from our engineers, and determined that we exceed all the requirements in those particular criteria. And so I think you can be rest assured that this is built, you know, not only to the standards, but in excess of the standards, and there's not gonna be any safety-related issues with that. We also provided some new photo simulations, and the reason for that was, we were proposing a moving the site. You know, it's only 120 feet, but the requirement is you provide photo sims. If you haven't looked at them, and you have any concerns about visual impacts, and again, I don't mean to suggest that there will be no visual impacts, but I encourage you to look at that, you know, pages 23 through 27, because what it really shows you is, with the new site, in the context of some of the utility poles and wires that are out there, you know, it is less of an impact than you might normally think. It's not as if you have a clear landscape and then you have our monopole there. You do already have some visual obstructions that are there. So we think that that mitigates it and really shows that this won't be as significant of a visual impact as it might be if none of those utility poles were there. And that was something that we talked about the last hearing, but I think these photo sims really show you what we were talking about. You know, a picture's worth a thousand words, and so I think that that's a good way of looking at it. So, you know, in conclusion, I don't wanna reiterate again what I said last time, but if you look at, you know, the criteria, understand that there's some sensitivity about this particular zone, but this particular kind of facility is allowed in the zone, subject to the conditional use criteria. There's no height limitation, and we believe that really nobody's raised any issue about us failing to satisfy any of the objective criteria. If you look at the mitigation measures that we put in place, we've got a design that's a monopole, which you encouraged, so that there's less of a visual impact. We've limited it to the minimum height necessary that we need to meet our objectives. We've done some of the additional things, such as moving the site to try to accommodate the adjacent owner's concerns. So we really feel that we've done everything we possibly can from a mitigation standpoint. In fact, I think even your staff report from the prior hearing indicated, we've really done, there's really no more mitigation that can be made. And so if you're looking at those criteria, as I explained before, I think maybe where the Planning Commission got a little bit off track was evaluating those subjective criteria, and in a sense, saying, you know, the height should really be limited to the buildings in the area. And that's not how we view the code, that's not how we interpret it. We don't think you should either, because it's not just this particular site, it's not just this particular zone, but all your zones, or a number of your zones have discretionary criteria, whether it's design review, conditional use, and the same issue's gonna come up, and I don't think the city council wants to adopt. It's part of an interpretation that these kind of facilities, which are typically always gonna be taller than surrounding buildings, or even the maximum height allowed for a building, should be limited to that. So with that being said, unless you have any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Questions? Yeah, Rich?
One thing you didn't address was, it doesn't fit the zoning. My understanding, that's MU, and it doesn't fit the zoning, it doesn't fit the character of the area. That was one of the things that the Planning Commission spoke of, and it's something that we asked you about before, and you didn't, you didn't...
Maybe, yeah, maybe I wasn't, maybe I wasn't clear. What I'm trying to say is that we believe that it does fit the zoning. And what the Planning Commission determined is that, just by its very nature, by its height, it's inconsistent with the zone. And it's our position that that's not a correct interpretation of the code, because you start first with, is the use allowed? If it's inconsistent with the zone, you won't allow the use. The use is allowed. Second question you ask is the particular issue of the height. Is the height somehow inconsistent with the zoning standards? There is no height limitation. And so if you look at, within that context, it's our belief, it's our position, that it is consistent with the zone. And then you couple on top of that, all the things that we tried to do to mitigate the impacts, and, you know, you have your own staff basically saying, "It's really not anything additional that we can mitigate." So if you were to determine that, notwithstanding the mitigation that we've done, notwithstanding the fact that it's allowed use, it's not subject or doesn't exceed a height limitation, but it's still not sufficient, in essence, I think that's an interpretation that ignores the fact that it is an allowed use and it isn't subject to a height restriction. And I understand that you may disagree with that, and that is your prerogative, you're a decision maker, but that's what I was trying to address when I was making those comments.
I guess, from the perspective of the Planning Commission, it is subjective, you know, what fits and what doesn't. I mean, if you don't have a this or that, one or the other, but if there is a judgment call, it's always a judgment call. And actually, there is more mitigation you could do. You could turn that into a tree. You could make it look like the one up in Salem, or wherever that is, up along the freeway. Someone told me about it, and I said, "I don't know where that's at." They said, "Yeah, well, it works then, doesn't it?"
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I don't know if what this is, is there is some rule someplace that I don't know about, that says it is okay or it isn't okay. It doesn't seem to fit the other, you know, because it's sticking up there, 300 feet comparatively with 200, 100 feet of the other things around it. It is, that is the way it is, I understand. It is not inside your circle. It is outside your, you know, and you folks put a lot of, a lot of credence in that circle. Well, what that tells me is, well, the circle, it may be important or it may not be important, I don't know that. And finally, when there are people who don't want to lease to you, there are a number of reasons that that can be. And it could be because they don't want something 120-foot tall there, or it could be that it's just not enough money.
Well, and I'm glad you raised that, because it is one thing that we did, that was, was an issue that was raised at the last hearing, that Mr. Jaggers addressed in his letter, and that was the fact that the kinds of conversations he was having with the property owner, except for the property owner who is the owner of the subject site, didn't even get to the level of talking about dollars and cents. And he confirmed what I thought was the case, and I represented the last hearing, but he confirmed that none of the property owners declined to rent us space on their property due to financial determinations.
You tell them how much it was prior, what you normally give?
Well, the way you approach this is just like anything. It's somewhat of an unusual situation. Somebody sort of calling out of the blue, saying, "Hi, I'm a representative from Verizon Wireless, we're looking for a site, et cetera." And you're right, there are some property owners that don't want these kind of facilities on their property, and they're absolutely entitled to that. For the most part, somebody who's not gonna be interested in it for those kind of reasons isn't even gonna wanna get into the details. To the extent that somebody is interested in, well, let's talk money, then that's usually someone who is interested, and you get into that level of conversation, because they are potential, you know, somebody who may potentially at least be okay with the concept. That's not what happened in any of these cases. I mean, that's what Mr. Jaggers confirmed, so that's not the case here, although I understand, I mean, it was a valid point that you raised, and that's why we asked him to clarify that.
Ray?
I'll truly admit, I was in favor of it before, and with the additional mitigation you're doing, it just reinforces my belief that we should allow it in that location.
Appreciate that.
The other thing you haven't addressed, and which it was brought up last time, so you didn't put it in your response back to the concerns, and Counselor Callum just brought that up, about turning it into mitigating it with a tree type effect. As stated, many communities have cell towers that look like a tree, or there's even southern, you know, part of the United States is palm trees, and other countries there, you know, throughout, so would you like to address that?
I would, and I apologize, I didn't realize that that was one of the issues that the council wanted to hear about, but I can address that. There are some facilities that are designed as sort of the fox tree, and you could do it based on what the surrounding area is. But you need to understand that those facilities are not ones that, when you're looking at them in close proximity, that it looks like a tree. You can tell it's not a tree. It's a metal pole that's painted a similar color to a tree with metal branches going off of it, and it is very wide and bulky, in particular, in comparison to the monopole that we're proposing here. So those are typically only gonna be appropriate when you have a landscape where there are other surrounding trees that it's gonna blend into. And for the most part, it's really to mitigate impacts from afar. Like if you've got a particular area where there's, you know, a beautiful forest area, and then you've got a tower there, then those are instances where we will offer that. Here, it's just not really appropriate, because there aren't any surrounding trees. And so you're gonna have a far bulkier structure that, don't kid yourself, it's gonna look like a metal fake tree. Maybe from afar, but I don't think that the mitigation, the visual impacts that you would be concerned about with this facility are the ones that will necessarily be from afar, it's more in the closer proximity. So for that reason, that wasn't really even an issue that we thought of, that we talked about with staff, that even came up at the Planning Commission. And the code talks about preferences towards the monopole, and that's basically what we gravitated towards. So we looked at the code, thought the monopole made, was most consistent with the code, made the best sense in this particular location, and that that tree really isn't appropriate in an area where you don't have a lot of surrounding trees that it's gonna blend in with.
I respect your opinion, but I do disagree. So I have seen them, so they do, they do blend in real well. The one I think in Salem is strictly within structures around it, so there is no other tree to be able to compare it with, but it just really blends in nice that you don't even notice it.
Where is it?
It's just right next to the freeway, heading northbound lane, what is it, past Market Street? Just in kind of a, I don't even think, it's not a commercial area.
I still can't read it, mine. And I travel that, well, of course, I'm probably not thinking about it either.
There's lots of photos, but, I mean, I respect your opinion, but I do disagree on that part, but, yeah, 'cause they can blend in well. And then where the code also mentions about the character of the base zone, it does surround trees. So in that base, that zoning there is, in that environment, is around trees. Okay, questions for the applicant? Any other responses? Is that it?
No, unless there's any other questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And so now we will be getting testimony for in support of the application, and there is one person who signed up, Jana Pierce, that wanted to speak in favor. So Jan, if you can come to the podium and then spell your last name and also furnish your address.
Thank you. My name's Jana Pierce, last name is P-I-E-R-C-E, and we own a home at 2117 Bobcat Avenue Southwest. It's in the very back corner of the development off of 53rd, and I just wanna thank you, Mayor and Council, for the chance to come and speak. We've had Verizon for as long as, since before we bought our house back there, and we've always had great coverage, and we've always had great service, and we moved back there, and as soon as we moved back there, it became obviously apparent that we don't have great service. I feel like I should be part of one of their commercials and should get paid as I walk around my house, saying, "Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?" Usually, I end up on my porch or in the street. I'm a stay-at-home mom. I left teaching to stay home with my three kids, and I need to count on my cellphone to work when I'm at home. I have three little kids at home, and our security system is also hooked up through the cell towers, and we often have problems with it disconnecting and with dropping calls, and it's become a safety issue. My husband travels for business, and I don't like knowing that sometimes my alarm system stops working, or if something happens that my cell service drops. I've checked with other providers, and I've always been told the same thing. I've called Verizon multiple times, and they say, "You're just in a dead zone. We're working on it, but there's not really anything we can do about it." So I get, nobody wants it in their backyard, nobody likes it. You drive through town, though, and I would guess that most of us can't even tell each other where the cellphone towers are, because they do blend in, and we don't really notice them unless we're looking. There's always gonna be reasons. People can come up with health reasons, or the view reasons, or it decreases property value, but I would guess that the used car dealership with the giant donkey decreases property value just as much as a cellphone tower. So I would just say that we live back there, and I'm home with my kids all the time, and I would just like the reliability of knowing that when I need my phone to work, it will, and when I count on my security system to work, that it will, because it's a safety issue, and I, you know, not in my backyard is always gonna be somebody's complaint. Nobody wants it. But I feel like the mitigations that they've made and the setback that it has, it will blend in with the power poles that are there. There's a 300-foot radio tower about half a mile down the road that has guide wires and everything. So if we're really worried about it, you know, there's plenty of other things around. So I just would encourage you to think about, not what it looks like, or, you know, everybody doesn't want it around, but more what we're talking about. We're talking about providing people with a service that the FCC and the Telecommunications Act say I have a right to, and I'm not getting that now. And it's a safety issue, and it's an issue that I feel like, it doesn't matter what carrier it is, I want to have that access to a phone and to a security system that I can rely on when I'm home with my three kids. So, thank you for your time.
All right, any questions of Jana?
There's no, there's no way to have a regular landline phone? There's no...
I could have a landline phone, yes. It would be an additional cost for me, and, you know, I, you're right, I could, I could have a landline phone.
I mean, it's not like there's nothing else you can do.
Right, but the FCC says, that you can't prohibit me from having cell service.
But it's not a safety issue, it's a, it's the fact that you don't wanna have a landline, and I understand that.
Right, but I mean, the FCC and the Telecommunications Act says you can't prohibit me from having access to cell coverage, and by not having a cell tower, I don't have access to cell coverage unless I'm wandering around... access to cell coverage unless I'm wandering around, out in the street, or hoping that it works when someone calls me.
Okay, all right, any other questions of Jana? Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak in, um, favor? And also, um, I think Conrad, you had signed up also on the cheater, were you wanting to speak, or not?
I think, I think, I just, I'll get to see her letter, which I might even, um, look.
Okay, okay, all right, is anyone else would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, um, and then, so, is there anyone in opposition, which we had one person that signed up, and that's Meredith Hansen? Yeah?
Hi, my name's Meredith Hansen, H.A.N.S.O.N., I live at 1550 Beaver Court, southwest, Albany, Oregon, 97321. Um, I am a resident of the Brookfield Community, uh, in Oak Creek, which is, I'm within the thousand-feet radius of the, of the proposed tower. And we moved in in April, and we searched high and low for this community, Albany, um, we have, for my husband's job, we had, um, we have an hour and a half from Portland to, um, radius of Portland that we have to choose, and we chose Albany. I can tell you that if that tower was established, we would not have purchased that home. Um, that, it's not just a home, but it's a community. That trail, the Oak Creek Trail, um, it combines a lot of communities, it combines the Springfield, um, Spring Meadows, excuse me, community, um, it combines the, the, uh, community that is just south of 53rd as well, um, everybody and their dogs are out there walking on Oak Creek, uh, the Oak Creek Trail. One of my major concerns as a resident that's directly affected by this proposal is that the home values, it may not be a big deal, be, a big deal to some, but my home is my largest asset, and I don't have any quantitative information to give you, except as a concern. I know Melissa had stated that Jason Caldwell had, you had, she, he had submitted some paperwork, regarding his concern, because he's a real estate agent, he does residential as well as commercial, he also does a lot of fundraisers for Albany that I am involved, uh, that I am involved with, with him, and when he found out about this, one, he was shocked, uh, because of the area and how much residential is right around, right around the proposed site, uh, but he wanted to make sure to, um, share his opinion, uh, professional, um, and personal about, um, the, the issue as well. Um, again, I don't have any information, nor does he, to say, "Hey, it's going to stay the same," or "It's going to go up," or "It's going to lower," that's a problem for me. Um, the last thing, um, I want to say is that I have a two-and-a-half-year-old little girl, and this was the, the home that we were going to raise her in, this was the place that we could finally stay after living in five different states, this is the home that she could go to, uh, high school in. Based off of some research that I've tried to do, and, and the lack of information that is out there for studies for longevity of exposure, I'm talking 20 years, which really aren't out there, um, that is a concern. Uh, it's a concern for all of us, how that affects us, our children are there, I don't know, um, this pushes more questions, all of our exposure, this pushes to ask for more studies, um, but it doesn't show me not to be concerned, it raises more questions. And so, whether or not it's an eyesore, sure, it's a, it's an ugly eyesore, whether you painted a tree or, or not, it's there, it's big, it's ugly, but what, does this have effect directly on my family and my neighbors' property values and health? Thank you.
All right, okay, any questions, Meredith, yeah, Beth?
Meredith, do you have good, uh, service where you are?
I do have good, I do have decent service where I am, yes.
Okay, and so, can you tell me, you said you're on Beaver Court in the Brookfield Division?
Beaver Court, southwest, yeah, 1550, yeah. It's right in the, and, actually, right-
Street.
Yeah, it's right at the beginning of the, of the community, so it's a little cul-de-sac in there, so right when you turn on Elk Drive, you make a right, and it's right in that little cul-de-sac area.
Okay, I wasn't sure, thank you.
How about, where the, we back up to the Green Belt?
Yeah, all right.
Now's the time, wouldn't a map would be a wonderful thing?
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you.
No, I mean, so-
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of the application? So, yes, Bill?
Madam Mayor, Counsel, thank you for this hearing. My name is Bill Ryals, R.Y.A.L.S., I live at 935 Jones Avenue Northwest, in North Albany. Uh, this is the third time I've testified at one of these hearings, it's wearing me down, I'll admit it. Uh, I'd like to keep it very simple and short, and boil it down to what I think are the essential issues, uh, that are before you, and I realize it's not easy, uh, you guys have to make hard decisions. Uh, I start with the zoning, and, and rather than get into the minutia, just look at it big picture, it's called the Village Center. Uh, I was just out in that neighborhood recently, um, my youngest son has a girlfriend out there, and I took her home to her parents', and, and I was impressed with really how nice those neighborhoods are in that area, and how much of a neighborhood there is. Uh, where I live in North Albany, I know that, that my kids and a lot of their friends often, uh, walk down the street and go to North Albany Village Center there, the similar zoning, and it's a real, uh, amenity for our neighborhood in North Albany, and just a really important part of why we live there. Uh, so that is exactly what this area, that the zoning has been created for, is a Village Center. And in, in the zoning, it mentions the things that would go in that Village Center, and there are localized shopping, and restaurants, and things for, a place for people together, and a, and a place to give that community in South Albany a real center, and a real heart, and, and both a, a commercial and just sort of a, a cultural center to that part of town, so that when people go out to dinner or something, they don't have to always venture clear downtown, or clear across town. And I imagine over the years, even though things are going slowly now, that there will be more development in South Albany, and that area will become increasingly more important as a commercial hub. Uh, I think that the city planners, these years ago, when they created these, uh, little city centers, these little village centers around town, had great foresight, and, uh, and thought very carefully about this. Uh, one of the things I know as a planner, by profession, is that that area is, is not overly large for a Village Center, and that by placing, my, my two concerns are very simple, one is by placing a cell tower of this nature there, I mean, you, I have, since this came up, on my travels, uh, around, I've become acutely aware of cell towers. And I see them everywhere, and notice them. And no, 120 feet is not extremely unusual, there are 120-foot towers around, and say they're not really average, they're probably on the outline, but they, they exist. But you'll find towers along freeways, along railroad tracks, in industrial areas, seldom, if ever, I don't know that I've ever seen them, where people really gather, oh, here's a, here's a cluster of restaurants, or a nice little mall, or an area like that, and there's a cell tower there, it's just not something that you would see. The one in Salem, interestingly enough, uh, my son was rate, was, uh, running in a, in a cross-country race at Mc, at McKay High School, and if you drive into McKay High School, you will see that, drove in and looked it over, and it's actually, uh, Sharon, it's actually quite nice-looking. If you see the photographs of them, they can look a little bit goofy, or is that right, but in reality, it's, it's, and that one's placed, it looks like, uh, along a similar location, there's, there's the high school and the parking lot, there's a residential area, and then there's a, a, like almost a wetlands kind of thing in between, and it's out along that, and there's a bike path and stuff, and it looks like that's exactly what happened, it was kind of a natural area, and they wanted to place a cell tower there, and, and they did it as a fir tree, and it's actually very nice, in my opinion, it looks much like a fir tree. The other aspect of the code in these Village Centers, that, uh, that the planners were very careful about putting in there, and insisting upon, is that anything that was built in these Village Centers reflect the character, the local carriage, character of that Village Center, and that there be some, and it's mentioned in the code in about three different sentences, that any development in these Village Centers has to go out of its way to, to make itself part of the character of that Village Center, and really reflect that community. And I would put to you that a monopole does not do that. A monopole is a monopole, it, it's, it looks to be really the preferred type of construction now, you'd have to go back, so, the older poles seem to be these, uh, you know, structural, webbed, um, lattice-type things, but all the new poles are pretty much monopoles everywhere, um, probably for a lot of reasons, that ice, probably danger with ice, and just maintenance on them. Uh, but, like I said, I've gone out of my way to look at these, and I, and I, if I were to grade, uh, and I, and you can't tell from driving around whether this is Verizon, or AT&amp;T, or who, who owns these poles, but I would say across the board, I've given them about a D minus in terms of maintaining those poles in any kind of aesthetic, they don't maintain the trees, or the, or the, uh, fences around them, they're, they look, the bottoms of them are just kind of like garbage dumps or something, they're not really maintained, I don't think there's any desire or need to maintain them, given the fact that most of them are in industrial areas, along tracks and things like that, where they don't really matter. So, it, when they, I guess that gets around to my, my final concern, is that if you grant this, given, uh, in my reading of the code, people have talked about, well, you know, you have to do this by some federal law, which means you have to, to allow communications, uh, facilities in your, in your towns, that's true. What you, what it says is that you have to have reasonable rules, and that you have to, you know, you have to apply those rules fairly. And so, if you decide tonight to grant Verizon this exemption, or this, uh, location within a Village Center, then I don't see how you can deny, uh, AT&amp;T, when they come and say, "Well, here's another Village Center in, in North Albany," or in any of the ones you have across town, including downtown, and "We want to put 120-foot tower pole here," uh, you let them do it. And that's where that fairness in the federal really, really weighs in, I don't, I, there's nothing, from what I can tell, looking through all the literature online in terms of different towns and municipalities around the country who do fight these regularly, and get into pretty big fights, as long as you're consistent with your application of your code and your reasoning, you don't get into trouble. But as soon as you allow them this, and don't put any conditions, either to make them require it be aesthetically compatible, or, uh, basically say it's too tall and not, not good at all, um, then you're going to be on the hook for the next one that comes in, and the next one after that. That's my concern.
Okay.
Questions?
Right, questions, yeah, Ray?
You mentioned, uh, the North Albany, uh, area, I'm talking, I presume you're talking about where Ray's and the-
Yes, yeah.
Things like that. Um, so it doesn't concern you, when you drive over the bridge, hitting that direction, one of the first things you see, looking right at that center, is a great big monopole?
Yeah, well, I know that pole, it's not great big, it's about 60, 75.
It's right in your face when you drive over the bridge.
I know where it is, it's, it is, uh, a long ways from Ray's, it's in the, uh, the little parkin', or it's a little, uh, storage area, I think, owned by Scott Lutman, I know that area very well. It's right by the road, it's right along, I mean, if you look at that, it's exactly what I'm saying, it's along the highway, it's in a, a storage, uh, huge, like, four, five-acre storage lock-and-store, it's, uh, half a mile from Ray's. It, yeah, it comes over, it's, uh, it's, I'll bet you lunch, it's half a mile. I walk there all the time, in fact, I just walked past there today. I walked from the Pennies Building to my house, and I walked right by there. So, it's, it's not a very tall pole, and it's, uh, you know, when you come over the bridge, you see the new hospital building, and you see that pole, and no, I don't like it very well. But it's not in the middle of the city's center.
Okay, are there questions for Bill? Okay, dear?
Do you have any idea what the cost is of making one of those poles look like a tree? Or something else desirable, perhaps?
So, uh, you know, rather than know an exact cost, I guess the way I would look at it is, uh, for Verizon, uh, any additional costs that would be required would be rapidly mitigated by the fact that they really want this location, they've really got a hole there, they're going to be able to park other carriers on that pole. My assumption is that this pole makes sense for them economically, uh, they put in quite a bit of infrastructure, they put in roads and whatnot. I doubt very much that, that requiring them to make this pole aesthetically pleasing would be a, would be a killer for them. Uh, it's, it, you know, maybe it doubles the cost of the pole, but the actual cost of that pole isn't huge when you're considering the cost of a project like that, and they're going to operate it for 20 years, or, or more.
And I've, I've read, too, that, uh, one of the most dangerous industrial jobs now is people who climb those poles to work on the equipment up, up at the top. And does it become more or less hazardous when you turn into a, and try and make it look like a tree? Do you have any idea of that factor?
Well, I didn't, uh, actually bring some information, but one of the things I did run into, and I noticed, because every time I see one of these, I, I try to drive around and get near it, uh, that apparently nationwide, there is an issue with kids climbing these, and hurting themselves. And you can see why, they're, they have like stirrups that come out of them, that are mounted directly into it, so if you look closely, and it doesn't, the ones I've seen, it's not too difficult to get up there, and just, just for a kid to start climbing them. Um, now that is not so much a concern when it's in the middle of an industrial area, but when you're in a Village Center, and you're next to a, a community, uh, it could be looked at as, uh, attractive nuisance. Uh, so, it, you know, the addition, I think it's my preference that you not find in favor of this, I think it's out of keeping with the zone, I think it sets you up for problems around town later. Um, I guess I mentioned the attractiveness of it, simply because it is in the code, that it's required, if I build a building there, I can't just do a concrete box with no windows, I mean, everyone would say, "That's not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood." So, uh, as an architect, I'd have to, you know, follow the, you know, some sort of guidelines in terms of aesthetic value for-
Jesse?
Bill?
We were given a, a map with the different towers on it, and I'm sorry, you, since you live in North Albany, do you know of any others beside, uh, towers besides the one at Ray's? Is there any other located in North Albany, or does that cover it pretty well?
Well, that's the only one that I'm aware of that, that's, you know, it's true, it's close to the Ray's, I mean, it's a great example to, to use that, because, uh, I, but I'm not aware of any other in North Albany, but, but as you drive around, you, you do see them-
Oh, yeah.
-you know, in many, many places, and, and I particularly look at, you know, where these are located, and, uh, you know, you, you just don't see them located near gathering places of people, and, and the previous person who testified, you know, mentioned her concern with perhaps the, the emissions from these things, and, and no one knows, but I would just put it to you, you know, is, if, if I have a, if I want to put a restaurant out there, and have a nice deck, and overlook the, the wetlands, do I want this power pole over my head? Is that going to feel comfortable to me, to sit within, you know, that, that area is not very large, and now they've moved it 120 feet back from the back of, of the bowling alley? Can, can you really put a restaurant in between then, and have this thing sort of lording over you, and, uh, it wouldn't be my first choice as a place to go.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, Rich?
You've been asking a couple of questions that I didn't think you'd have the answer to, so, do you, do you happen to know how many billion dollars' worth of business Verizon does? I mean, it's-
Yes.
We've heard the inference that we have to worry a lot about how much money we spend, and that is the fact for every single person, and every, everyone in here. Um, it is a little different when it's one of us who might, you know, someone who works for wages, who, who makes 2,000 or 5,000, you know, versus someone who has several billion dollars' worth. Um, and I just, I, I would point out that maybe we're not, shouldn't be so worried about how much it costs to make it look right, when we, we give away $300,000 to make sure we can have an old funeral home look better.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, it's, the, the thought process is maybe just a little strange to me, is all.
Well, you, you have a difficult job to do, and, and I see what, what you're there to do is to, you know, stand up and, and for the citizens of this town, and for our future, and, and for the livability, and, and the desirability of this as a community.
Because this has both pieces. One, ease of operation, and the other one is how it looks, how it operates.
Okay, all right, anything else?
Good luck, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay, anyone, um, um, else in the audience? Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay, anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak neither in favor or in opposition, as neutral? Okay, not seen any. And then, does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony?
Thank you, Mayor Members, excuse me, members of the council. For the record again, Mike Connors here on behalf of Verizon. I'll start off by addressing a couple of issues that Ms. Hanson raised. Again, I appreciate where she's coming from, you know, as I've said numerous times, these are not the most popular, you know, developments, we understand that. But, you know, I assume, I have confidence that the city council understands that this is an important piece of your infrastructure. You've got constituents, increasing numbers using these kind of facilities, you've heard other testimony both tonight and previously about there being a lack of coverage, we've got evidence to the record in effect. So, you have to balance those two. But on the two particular issues that she raised, one is having to do with property values. If you look at your code, there's nothing in the code that talks about taking into account property values, that's why we didn't provide any evidence, that's why that issue hasn't been raised before. And in fact, with my experience, in those instances where it is raised, there are numerous studies that look into the impact on property values and show that it doesn't have a significant or even really appreciable impact on property values. And I understand that she made reference to Mr. Caldwell's submission and being a broker, I just want to make sure you understand what his testimony states. Because what he says is, while we don't know the exact number of this, and he's talking about impacts on values or future buyers, or can we truly quantify any property value loss, there's a high probability it will slow down the amount of buyers. There's no real evidence behind that. If you looked at the evidence, had this issue been raised earlier and we had an opportunity to do it, we could have submitted studies to show you that it doesn't have a negative impact. Again, I understand where Ms. Hanson is coming from and assuming that that may be the case, but I think you have to look at the standards, and I think if you look at the evidence, it would show that that concern doesn't bear out. The other issue is health issue, and this is an issue that quite frequently comes up. And it's a hard one for me to respond to, because I get it, I have two kids. I, you know, understand that when you've got health risk, you're always sort of wondering, what is the potential issue there? But actually, the health-related impacts are federalized standard. They're standards that the FCC adopted after extensive public processes, extensive studies, and they federalize the standards, and in doing so, have adopted federal law that says state and local jurisdictions can't take into account health-related issues. And I know that that's hard to hear, because you'd never like to have somebody, especially the federal government, tell you can't do something. But the reason for that is, it's a very complex and sophisticated issue, and they've gone through that process. And because the federal government, the FCC, understands that that's going to be an issue that's coming up, they don't want it being determined on an ad hoc basis. So, I know it's not a great thing you want to hear, but I guess whether we like it or not, federal law prohibits from considering that. So, I guess I'll leave it at that, on that particular issue. Mr. Riles talked about the village center standard and looking at it, and you have to look at it within the context of the village center. I want to make sure that you all understand that the criteria that you're looking at, this compatibility, it is not specific just to the mixed-use village center. It's a criteria that applies to any of these facilities that are proposed in any of the mixed-use zones, community, commercial, transit district, or industrial park. And you have a very similar or comparable standard in your design review, sorry, excuse me, site plan review process, and that would apply for one of these facilities being proposed in a regional, commercial, light industrial. So, it's not just merely a matter of looking at, like, this is a mixed-use village center standard that was specifically adopted because the city council or the staff thought, hey, it really is inappropriate in this area, so we're going to impose a standard. This is a general conditional use standard. And again, I think, as I indicated before, you have to look at it within the context of what are the specific standards that were adopted for these kind of facilities within the mixed-use village center. And the two are, is it a use that is allowed, is it a height limitation, because those are really the issues that are causing these concerns and folks to raise these issues. So, I don't think that it's based on specifically something in the mixed-use village center. Now, I understand the point about, you know, isn't it better to put it along the highway, some of those locations? Yes. But those, that infrastructure's already been built out. That's sort of the low-hanging fruit, that when the wireless industry started building out their networks, they started building in those areas, high-volume areas, areas that were easier. But as we've progressed in our use and reliance on these kind of devices, and it's important to understand, it's not just the number of people that are using wireless devices, although that has increased exponentially, but it's also what we're using them for. It used to be when we just get it, you know, we use it for a phone call, maybe an email. Now, people are on the internet, there's a huge amount of data. The need for this facility is not just coverage, it's capacity. And so, what you have is this larger network that's been built out, and then has the number of people and the types of uses have increased exponentially, these pockets are now starting to form. And unfortunately, the pockets and the need are not always in the areas that we wish that we could put them in. But that's where these facilities have to go. They have to go in an area, it's based, it's a locational area, so that they can provide the service to the people in that proximity. And so, that's why we're here today. And not because we decided, you know what, we want to put this in the village center and we want to get it in there no matter what. We did it because we had a need, we evaluated the need, and we determined based on all the factors, this really is the only viable site we have to be able to meet that need. Would have been easier to go the other way, but I mean, I guess that's what we're stuck with. I know Mr. Riles, you know, made the point about whether these facilities are maintained. I can tell you, Verizon Wireless maintains their facilities. I know that there are some out there that may not be as well-maintained, but, you know, that's where maybe being a big company helps, because we have the resources and we have a reputation that we have to protect. And I can tell you that we protect that and make sure that our facilities are well-maintained. Now, with respect to, I know the tree, the tree issue came up again. And again, you know, as I explained, the reason that we didn't propose that is because this is not an area that we would typically ever think of these kind of facilities. One thing that I want to make sure that you understand as well, that I don't think I covered the last time, is unlike a monopole where you can put the antennas at the top of the, at the top of the facility or tower, we'll call it a tower for just lack of better terms, with one of those trees, you don't put the antenna on the top. You have to build a crown on top of that, and then the antennas are on some of the, you know, metal branches that go off. So, it would actually require us to increase the height. And again, as I indicated before, I encourage you to look at those photo sims, because it really kind of shows you the context of the whole area. If you look at, again, from eye level, because that's mostly what we're talking about, you have a line of those utility poles that are right there, I think that monopole blends in better. And I think if you have a large tree there, I think it's going to be obvious that it's not a real tree. It's going to be taller, it's going to be bulkier, and I think that's going to have a greater impact. Now, if you believe that there's no way that you can approve this without that kind of a design, I guess you have that option to say, we're going to impose that kind of a design, and we would have to come back with that. But I really don't think that that's going to address the issues. I think having a lower facility, smaller in height than that, that's slender, in an area where there's not a lot of surrounding trees that it's going to blend in with, that's more of a mitigation, that's a more effective mitigation than would be some of those other alternatives. But I respect the fact that there may be some on the council that disagree with that, and that's something that you can evaluate. So, unless there are any questions, I believe that covers all of the issues that I wanted to address.
Okay, any questions?
I have one thing. Under our charter, we are required to have four votes before we can take any action. The planning staff has recommended that the council tonight make a tentative decision, and of course, we would then come back at a later meeting with findings. If we do, I don't know how the vote will turn out, none of us do, but if we can't make a decision because we lack four votes until we have a full council again, would you agree to give us a 30-day extension so that we can have that full council to make that decision?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, would staff, would a staff member like to respond to any of the testimony presented?
I don't think we have anything to add, but we are available for questions.
Okay, all right. Okay, with that, I will declare the public hearing closed at 8:15 PM. And council, do you have questions in for staff?
I do.
Jesse?
Melissa, Bob, we've heard different views of what's in the mixed use, what can be the zoning, what can be and what can't. Can you tell me what really, what they would need to do in order to pass our code, or to fit into our code?
Well, I can start, and Bob perhaps could follow up. Well, really, at issue, I think are the rather discretionary language. And so, in that sense, the decision, you know, it's not clear-cut, it is subjective. And so, the language of the two primary criteria would be, the proposed use is consistent with the intended character of the base zone and the operating characteristics of the neighborhood, and that it's compatible with existing and anticipated uses in terms of the size, the scale, the style, intensity, setbacks, landscaping, et cetera. And also that the tower is located in an area that's unobtrusive and not substantially detract from aesthetics or neighborhood character. So, as you can see from that language, you know, it is subjective. The code allows to be considered this cell tower of this height, or more than 50 feet, through a conditional use review process. And so, in that sense, you know, it's, I think, that you could find, you know, either way.
Either way, yeah.
Bob, would you like to?
I think Melissa answered just about the same way I would. The standard there is that if it's greater than 50 feet, then the telecommunication facility requires this discretionary review. And so, I think the best advice we can give is to consider those review criteria and what they say as you formulate your decision. I think I'll leave it like at that.
Yeah, because I'm looking at the picture on page 25, and you can't tell where the cell tower is, because there's so many other poles there, so, you know, it's like-
Can't?
Jesse, if I could throw in my two cents to sort of reinforce what you've just heard from Melissa and Bob. Clearly, the code, if this were a proposed 50-foot cell tower, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight, because the code allows it outright in that zone. So, that's point one. Point two, the code specifically does not prohibit a taller cell tower. It just says that if it's going to be taller, it's got to go through the review process that we've gone through with both the planning commission and now the city council, because it's been appealed to us, because it comes onto us. And so, the issue of whether or not it meets the criteria is highly subjective. And of course, what we've been listening to for now several hours of testimony is that subjectivity. Some people are, you know, it sort of depends on where you are at. I mean, I live in that neighborhood, and I know it very well. I've lived there for nine years, I've run down the Oak Creek Trail, I've experienced the problems with cellphone reception, I, you know, I know it. And the thing that aggravates me the most about this whole issue is that I never noticed we had 80-some-foot utility towers running down Fur 53rd Street until this Blumen cell tower was proposed. I mean, you know, I started to look, and it was like, like Bill. You know, he said, I never noticed these cell towers until I started looking for them. And you can interpret that and process it, you know, for, in a pro or a con way. I sort of say, well, gee, if I've never noticed it before, I guess it couldn't have been too horrible. I also really never noticed the 275-foot tower that's in the same, you know, same neighborhood. It's right across the street from people's homes that live down in that neighborhood. So, you know, when you're trying to think of things like, well, how, you know, compatible is this with, with community character and stuff, a lot of that just depends on who you talk to and, you know, how you perceive those things.
Yeah, because I'm thinking, my way of thinking is, the public is, it's the demand that is requiring these to be placed, you know. And that's basically, I think, to me, is the main reason that these are going. And so, if the public demands it because of they want all this service for, like you say, internet and whatever, sometimes you have to maybe put up with a little bit of, you know, something that, like I say though, on page 25, it doesn't make any difference. They're, they all look the same. So, being subjective, I wish it were black and white, be a lot easier for the council to make a decision. So, anyway, that's what I have to say.
And that's what you're kind of faced with, is, you know, seeing if it is compatible with the neighborhood, and if it does fit in with that character of the neighborhood. And maybe, since these are becoming, you know, more cell towers are needed, maybe we need to be looking at our code in the near future to be changing it to, or maybe modify it to, to kind of sort of keep up with the cellphone tower trend and the future of them. So, council, you do have three motions that are on the green sheet, and what would the council like to do?
Move for option number three, do you want me to read the whole thing? Tentatively approve it?
Yeah, go ahead and read it, so then it's on-
Go ahead and read it?
Yeah.
I move to approve the conditional use permit application CU-01-14, subject to adoption of final findings and conclusions. This motion is based on those findings and conclusions in the August 27, 2014 staff report demonstrate the applicable review criteria have been satisfied in findings and conclusions made by the city council during deliberations on request. The way, so it is to approve the tower with the mitigating effects that they have brought forward.
Second.
Okay, all right, motion's been made, and there's a second, and discussion.
Sorry.
Rich?
I will not vote for this without mitigation. We made a whole lot about, let's not step on our planning commission in the past. We use planning commission because we don't want to have to do the work all the time, and because we want to get their judgment. Their judgment was, this was not right. Now, I don't, I wasn't in the room, I don't know why. But unless, unless they want to make it look better, I mean, I think, I don't have a problem with a cell tower there, if the people around it don't have a problem with it. But it should fit into the neighborhood, and I don't see where it fits in. When you take the pictures and you take them back from places where you have stuff poking up in front of you, of course, it fits in. Pick it from the other end. Take it from a little closer where it looks like it's there. I mean, that's what other people are looking- I mean, that's what other people are looking for, are looking at, excuse me. So, I mean, we're going to vote the way we're going to vote. I will not vote for this the way it is.
I was making amendment to the motion, though, if you, if you wanted to, if you felt the need to mitigate.
Well, I would, I would move to amend this to include the version that approves it with changes for appearance. And I don't have that one in front of me, so I can't tell you. Oh, number two. Does everyone recognize what number two is?
I see. So, so he wouldn't be able to amend this motion. He would, it would have to be, draw this to make up a new motion.
No, he can move to amend the ordinance, to move to amend the motion. That'll have to second and pass.
Right.
And, but you're going to need some, it would be helpful if you would give us some greater degree of clarity about what you want, what improvement conditions you want imposed. Is it enough that it have, that we develop some clearer condition about the, is it the tree look that you want?
That they would come back with a proposal to mitigate the singularity of, of the pole, whether that is a tree or something that is around next to the bottom, something so it does not look like it's a single pole stuck up in here.
No, respectfully, we can't require that at this stage. We can't require...
Turn it into a tree.
Well, you can, you can direct staff to propose the tree condition, and we would do some investigation in the meantime to see what that criteria looks like. The, what I'm saying is, you can't at this stage not act on the current request that is before you. You can impose a condition, but you can't throw the ball back to them to say, "Start over and give us new conditions." If you deny it, they would have the right to start over or appeal. The other thing I want to clarify is respectfully, you cannot make legally, make your decision based upon simply a desire to support the Planning Commission because you've done this as a de novo hearing. And when you do it as a de novo hearing, you are required to act as if the decision of the Planning Commission didn't occur. And you're making the decision based on the evidence that's submitted in this proceeding. Now, not being compatible with the Village Center, that is, of course, a legitimate conclusion.
That's the reason that I understood that they used.
Okay. And so, if, your motion would then be presumably to amend Counsel Kupczynski's motion to include the condition that it be made to look like a tree, and we'd come up with whatever those standards are. Are there any other visual changes that are encompassed in your motion?
That's it.
Okay, so is that your motion, then?
That will be my motion.
Motion to amend, to have the appearance look like a tree. Is that it?
In substance.
Okay, all right. Is there a second to that motion? Okay?
I have to read that.
All right, okay. Okay. And any more discussion on the main motion, the original motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, I think that passes four to one. Okay, all right. Motion carried. Okay, thank you, folks.
Thanks.
Okay. And within five days of the decision, the Community Development Director provides written notice of the decision to the applicant and any other parties entitled to notice. A decision of the City Council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Okay, all right, we are done with that hearing. And next is business from the public. Is there anyone here that would like to bring an item forward this evening? So, yes, great.
Just a little. Good morning. My name is Greg Bechtel. I haven't been here in a while. Last name is B-E-C-H-T-E-L. I live at 978 Ferry Street, Southwest. That is Albany, and that's Ward One. Now, I'm here this evening. You probably know why. You, you being the city council, are considering an ordinance to establish a tax on the sale of marijuana. Now, I'm sure Mr. Delpor has talked probably at length about Initiative 91 and how it has a, excuse me, clause that actually preempts local municipalities. I'm sure that's come up. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that this evening, other than to say that Initiative 91 does actually have that, that, that language in it, which makes sense. I mean, I understand why you guys are looking at doing that now, and it's in an effort to kind of get out on, in front on this issue to beat Measure 91. I've read a lot of newspaper articles on this. A lot of other cities are kind of looking at the same thing. But a few months ago, this council said they didn't want to be out front on marijuana stuff, hence the desire for a moratorium against dispensaries. And yet, you want to be out front on taxation? Do you think moratoriums were a hot potato? Guys, this is, it's not a great idea because people are actually proud of Albany for the stand that was taken with dispensaries. We get a lot of outer towners that say that, that they come to Albany because of, word has gotten out that this council is actually supportive of the OMP in terms of that marijuana won't be persecuted in Albany, at least from the medical side, which is why I'm here this evening. I originally wasn't going to bother because this ordinance is a non-issue. Measure 91 preempts it. All it's going to result in is a lawsuit across several cities in the state. You guys are smart. The lawsuit is not the route that this city will end up going. Plus, half this council didn't even want marijuana in Albany. We already pay-ado to have medical marijuana in Albany, and the council is entertaining the idea to add more money taken from medical marijuana dispensaries? Also, Measure 91, or I'm sorry, Initiative 91, and... I can wait till you get back, Mr. Kellum, if you'd like.
That's okay.
Okay. Anyway, there is already current municipal code regarding the sale of marijuana in Albany. It was passed by this council before. Initiative 91 specifically says that there cannot be taxes on the sale of medical or recreational. So, the current municipal code in Albany, some may argue is actually in conflict with the initiative. We're not going to make that argument. We have no interest in bringing that kind of can of worms up again, but it is out there. So what does this ordinance do? As I've said, this ordinance basically is a guaranteed lawsuit if it's enforced, which, again, it's just another conflict of the state versus the city. If it's not enforced, it's pointless, much like the previous ordinance that passed, the AMC I just referred to, because I'm sure you guys know that there are still illegal quasi-dis dispensaries in Albany. We were hoping that the AMC that passed before would deal with that. It hasn't yet. So before we move on to a new marijuana kind of ball of worms, can we, can we fix the one we had before? Let's see. I already talked about the current state law prohibits actually taxing medical marijuana. It's, that's in current law that medical marijuana can't be taxed. Plus, if, and I know that the ordinance has a 0%, but if you're not anticipating or planning on taxing medical, why even put it in there at all, even at 0%? I'm not a conspiracy theorist. There are those who are. They look at that, and they go, "That's a door." Let's see, the, oh, yes. And from an outsider looking in, looking at this, you're talking about creating a tax on an illegal activity in the hopes that if it someday becomes legal, you will make money from it. That's kind of ludicrous, guys. That's talking about, and of course, you know how I feel about medical marijuana. You know how I feel about marijuana in general, and I would never compare it to other crimes. But if you're talking about sheer taxation, according to FBI statistics, the sale of meth makes a whole lot more money than marijuana. And if you're talking about creating a tax on an illegal activity, this area of the country is in the top five for abuse of methamphetamines. Tax methamphetamines. I mean, it's the same principle. Or if you're looking at an activity that you're going to be able to tax once it becomes legal, Nevada is a great example. There are areas in Nevada where prostitution is legal. The other areas where it's not, by all means, create a tax for prostitution, and if it eventually becomes legal, you can grandfather in and make money off it. It's a ludicrous, ludicrous line of logic. It makes no sense whatsoever. And furthermore, this is not the way to go about getting a piece of the marijuana kind of pie. It's a bad idea, and it will not stand up. It won't. We're open to, to taxes on recreation. We don't have a problem with that at all. It just has to be done right, and this is not the way. So that's all I have this evening, unless you guys have questions and about anything.
Okay, any questions, Greg?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay, not seeing anyone. Okay. Council, so we did discuss some on Monday, the establishing a tax on the sale of marijuana. And we did have quite a bit of concerns from our city attorney on the validity of it. And would you like the city attorney to read the first reading?
Well, a vote's not required to do a first reading. A first reading is merely a presentation of the issue, and so you have no precedent for first getting council consent by a majority action before you read an ordinance. So I think with all due respect, unless the council takes it off the agenda, which was a vote that failed at the work session, then it's on the agenda, it should be read. That doesn't mean it gets adopted. So I'll proceed to read it with your permission, Mayor.
I think it's a waste of time to read it, and I would move again that we not read it.
Well, are you moving that it be removed from the agenda?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to remove it from the agenda, and it's been a second. And any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion failed.
May I do a roll call for that, please?
Yes.
Bolson?
Yes, I want to remove it from the agenda.
Johnson?
No.
To read it.
The motion was to remove it from the agenda.
No, I don't want to remove it.
Kellum?
Kellum.
Kupczynski?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
That's three to two, and I just need that for the record. Thank you.
So unless you directly otherwise, Mayor, I would propose to read it as is customary and is our ordinance format. An ordinance establishing a tax on the sale of marijuana and marijuana-infused products in the city of Albany.
I think I detected an issue with the motion there and people's votes, and I don't know how critical this is, but in the reporting of it in the future, it might be important to one or more council members. The motion was to remove the issue from the agenda. You're voting to remove it from the agenda. And if you voted no, you were removing, voting not to remove it from the agenda.
I think everybody understood that.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I thought, I heard people voting no who may have wanted to vote yes in favor, but I don't remember exactly, but maybe I got it wrong.
Yeah, I think some of the public may be confused, wondering, there's a majority of us that don't want to hear this stuff. But it takes four votes to get it off the agenda.
Exactly.
And we have, we have one member absent, and the mayor can't vote unless it's a three to three tie. So it's an interesting conundrum that we have to live with.
Okay, so the ordinance has been read the first time. What would, would the council like to do anything with the motion? I mean, with the ordinance?
Do we move that it be read a second time and tied along?
Well, you can. I mean, it's clearly not going to pass, but...
But that's the thing. Or should we just table it?
Honestly, posting, reading the motion is the modern version of posting the proposed ordinance somewhere on the town wall so that the public can know what the council is thinking about. The fact that you read an ordinance is not any indication that the ordinance is going to be passed. It is not. And so, all that it has done is that the charter generally requires that an ordinance be presented for consideration or discussion at two meetings unless the council moves to read it a second time in a single meeting. That requires a unanimous vote of all present. It's clear from the division on the issue that there would not be a unanimous vote. You can certainly make that, but, so what will happen now is the ordinance will come up a second time at the second meeting in this month. At that time, it would be read unless, again, four votes moved to take it off the agenda. It would be read, and then the council would vote, and it will either pass or it will fail or you will table it or do whatever you choose.
Okay, got that? So in two weeks, then, it'll be on the agenda for the second reading on it. Okay?
And there's no reason to proceed, then, with the resolution, which is Item D.
Correct. Mm-hmm. Yep, okay.
Whatever.
Gotcha. All right. Okay, I hope that everyone understood that. Okay, it will be taken up in two weeks. And next, council, is adoption of the consent calendar, a very small one. And what would you like to do with that item, or would you like anything pulled off for a discussion?
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And Item F, that was actually taken off because we discussed that on Monday, and that's going to be held over till we have a full council for discussion. So that leaves business from the public, I mean, business from the council. So, Rich, anything? Nothing, Ray? Okay, Bessie?
As I say, I've been a little busy, and so I will bring a report from the LLC conference soon. I can't say when, but I've just been a little busy, so I didn't quite get it done.
Okay, all right. And Bill?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, Dick?
Yeah, in my walking around, I've had several comments about the state of the city. And one that I think I appreciated the most was a man who said he'd moved here. Really appreciated a city that you can ride in bicycles and get where you want to go.
Mm-hmm. Good.
Appreciate that comment.
Yeah. Okay. And for me, actually, I, you know, was at the League of Oregon Cities Conference on the Mayor's Day and then one of the tours. But a lot of our discussion during the Mayor's Forum was over the marijuana issue. So, yeah, it was quite a length. A lot of the communities really had a lot of questions over that piece. But also took a tour of downtown Eugene, a walking tour that was a couple hours long. And just amazed to see how much is really needing to be revitalized in Eugene. And what's really disappointing is how they've lost so much of their historic structures and stock over the years. You really didn't see a lot of significant historic structures like we do for Albany, and along the riverfront, too. They want to get it lighted, and we have way more light along some of our riverfront than what they do in that part of Eugene, so...
Didn't they have an urban renewal in the 60s in their downtown?
Yeah, they still do, yeah.
I mean, they did, and they did something to it. Now they're tearing their, tearing new, new city hall, they're tearing it down.
Yeah, they still have some urban renewal, though, too, there. But, yeah. So, so that would be my part updating on League of Oregon Cities, but, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, one more thing. When you brought that up about the cities, I mean, the marijuana issue is, was discussed every, I mean, no matter what event you were going to, it was brought up. And one of the sessions was people from Washington that gave the pluses and minuses or what's going on in Washington right now. And they didn't really think ahead on a lot of the issues. And so they're really having some problems right now. And so I just wanted to, you know, say that now before we get, before I get my report done. But there's just so many things that have not been thought about that it affects, you know, so just wanted to know that.
Okay. So that was it for me then, I think. And Wes, anything?
Just a reminder of the 150th birthday celebration taking place Saturday and Sunday here in Albany. Saturday at the Farmer's Market, Sunday from 1:00 to 4:00 here at City Hall.
They also have the movie about the history starting at noon at the picks.
Oh.
Sunday.
Okay. Mark, anything? No, Mayor and staff? So, okay, and we will have our next meeting is, I think we have Cara next week. But our work session is October 20th, and our regular session is October 22nd. And with that, we adjourn.